Call this meeting in order to declare a quorum. I asked the gentleman if she would say a prayer for us.
Father, I just want to thank you for this day and just thank you, dear Lord, for the moisture of your center way, dear Lord. And we're always thankful for more. I pray, dear Lord, for today's meeting. I pray that your clarity and wisdom, dear Lord, on the decisions that need to be made will be present. And I thank you, dear Lord, for always being with these gentlemen. I pray safety, dear Lord, for their travel today and back to their conference, dear Lord. I pray, dear Lord, for our nation. I pray that your hand, dear Lord, will be upon it, dear Lord, and that the clarity will be done, dear Lord, in a way that's pleasing to you. I ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a presentation by our for the tax safety achievement.
So we have Steve Owens here, who is your safety representative. And so Steve is going to have his.
So thank you guys for allowing us to be here today. We wanted to just come by. We gave out the safety achievement awards at CMRC to the representative that you sent. I wanted to just come by and formally, you know, do a little two-minute presentation. So just wanted to basically say thank you for, you know, having a safety culture and allowing us to come in and do the training that's required to get the award. And y'all have been gracious enough to allow me in on a couple of occasions. You've also done a lot of work to get the policies, the safety policies passed and in place that are required for the award. And this all just, you know, it just reflects on the county that you guys place a priority on having a safe work workspace where your employees have the opportunity to go home safe every day and doing everything that you can to, you know, to ensure that. So on behalf of TAC and the risk management pool, just wanted to present this award. And if anybody wants to grab any pictures, come up and whoever you guys want to officially accept it. Judge?
Judge.
All right.
We both the judge?
That's how it works.
Yeah. Oh, boy.
Do you want to get over there in front of the bench?
Wherever you want me to.
Yeah, that'd be a better picture. Usually we get the whole court.
That's what I'm thinking. I think. You're not wrong.
One, two, three, and I'm gonna take one from here. One, two, three. Okay.
Wait there, wait there, wait, wait, wait.
And if you want me to.
Can I get one more?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll put it back.
All right, thank you. Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, Jake.
Thank y'all again for having us here.
All right, thank you guys for being here.
I look forward to seeing you guys again.
Yes.
All right.
O W E N S. Okay, great, thank you.
See you, Rena.
He's getting in the box.
We're headed to, we'll see if Jeff is talking.
Good luck.
Have a good day.
I gotta wait to go. What's her name, Marilla?
What is Rena's last name? F Y F E.
Yeah, she was at the. I think she was at probation at Gray County when I was a deputy up there. Small world. Number four, consent agenda.
Okay, I have regular minutes of April the eighth. I have a personal report, sort of the portion of additional revenue, amendment changes by fund. I had the auditor treasures report unreconciled April the 12th, 2024. The departmental financial reports, I have the district clerk, DMV, tax collectors, JP's one and two. I have nine sets of bills, claims and accounts. And on the open meetings act, public information act and cybersecurity, I have certificates for Bernice Polk. On the purchase and acknowledgements, I have one on Bernice Polk.
Let's see what's on.
That's it, so.
Okay. Mr. Williams.
Um, we'll go over the auditor treasurer's report very quickly if I can find it. And the first couple of pages is the treasurer's report, which shows the beginning cash balance, revenues, expenses, and ending cash balance. And if you're looking for the ending cash balance, if you'll look at the actual ending cash balance as of April 12th, general fund. Cash and investment accounts, five million, nine hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred fifty-eight, fifty-nine. And on the second page at the bottom, general ledger balance, all funds, twelve thou- twelve million, two hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars, ninety-three cents. And then after that is the income statement, which shows the original total budget, the current total budget, month-to-date activities, year-to-date activity and budget remaining. And it's just really for the first 12 days of April. And the last report is the schedule of lease payments showing the four lease purchase agreements for road and bridge.
Is that the one that goes like three different directions?
Three different directions? No. Oh, some of it's.
Yeah.
Portrait of some of its landscape, yes.
Okay. There you go. Yeah, we've got another one. Wait. Christina Jim, okay. All right. Motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Maxwell to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion case. Does the. So like I said, that's a different format for some of those reports. There's a reason I'm saying that.
For, are you talking about the huge report or just the regular reports?
It looks like.
We have your reports.
The credit cards, I think.
Who's driving today? I need someone to play it. See now you drive.
I guess that was the thirty-four-page payment report. That's a different format than what we've had.
Oh, that's the district clerk's report.
I have one other question. Why do we have a one-dollar expenditure?
Because we have one-dollar expenditures. I guess it costs more to process that expenditure. We have to pay it.
Okay. I'm sure I'm coming to it here shortly.
These ain't any good, sir.
Yeah, nothing has yet.
No.
Thank you.
I was just trying to hear.
I know.
I know every time I do it.
This is, uh, for the limited purpose to reimburse copies for Eastland County General Budget Fund under copy supplies. Copies supplies.
One dollar.
One dollar.
Yes, sir. And I believe there's two of them in this.
There is.
Yeah.
But I mean, how did, how did we come up with one dollar? I guess is the question. I'm not saying you generated, you have the next one. I'm not saying you generated, I'm just wondering why there's a dollar on here twice.
Uh, because two different employees reimbursed for copies, personal copies.
Well, I appreciate him doing that. I just think that would be required to fill out more paperwork than I do.
Well, Christina's office had to recede it. I had to certify it. Y'all have to sign it.
There you go. Including the two signed for the one dollar. All right, burn ban. I'm assuming that we're. We keep the burn ban.
I'm good with it.
Uh, what?
I'm good with leaving it off.
Oh. Oh, that's. I thought he was kicking you under the, under the table or something. I was gonna have to get on to him. All right, we're gonna leave the burn ban off. Emergency amendments.
None.
Not even for a dollar?
Not even for a dollar.
Discussion consider allowing the Veterans Service Officer, Ruben Zarotti, to organize a veterans program. Mr. Zarotti.
Yeah, that'd sound very good.
You're the one that wrote this, so I'm just repeating.
All right, I'm gonna stand up here with Daniel.
Mr. Jackson, there you go.
I don't know how long I got to speak, but I'm gonna give you a speech. As you know, every year I do a project called Toys for Kids, Veterans Toys for Kids, and I collect toys. Well, this past year I was the grand marshal of Santa Claus coming downtown. And I looked up at the courthouse and around, around the courthouse and around the square, there was nothing lit. It was dead. Didn't even look like a Christmas celebration to me, and it was really heartbreaking. So I started going, looking around, pictures of different counties, and all their courthouses were lit up. And I know here in the past, there's been a lot of people that complained that this and that and this and that. Well, as you know, when I do a project, I do a project and I not fulfill that project. So this year, I want to put before you a project that I think is one of the best projects that I've ever come up with, and it's dear to my heart. And it's called Light the Veterans Courthouse Up. This is gonna consider quite a bit of work. It's gonna consider quite a bit of money, but I'm letting put the footwork to it. I'm not asking the commissioners, I'm not asking this courthouse for any monies. I'm just asking for your blessing. It's a shame that we have one of the oldest and most beautiful courthouses, and it's not lit up there at Christmas. Well, this project is gonna do above that. This project is gonna be where you can light this courthouse three hundred sixty-five days out of the year, and it's permanent. There's not gonna be no bicker from this organization, this organization, that who's doing this, who's not. Well, it's Ruben Zarotti and the people of Eastland County that are doing this project. I'm not gonna say it's me. I'm gonna do the footwork, but just say, just think, just think about this. Christmas, you have will light up for Christmas. Beautiful. I'm in ill glow. Daniel can tell you what he's shown me. We'll give more information to you as, as the process and we get your blessing. This courthouse will illuminate. You'll be able to see it as far away as probably into Cisco and coming in, in from the east side of town. Not only for Christmas, you'll have Fourth of July, you'll have Veterans Day, you'll have Memorial Day lit up. You'll have, um, the Eastland County Crisis Child Awareness, which is lit up blue. It'll light up blue. We can light the courthouse any way we want to with this lighting system that Daniel has put together. He's working with an architect out of Dallas, Texas to help with this. I've already put the motion into process to, to have my ducks in the line in case you say, hey, go ahead and do it, let's do it and all that. But just think of the attraction this courthouse will bring to Eastland County. There's not another courthouse in this county or anywhere outside of our county that has this. Nobody does. You know, you got old, you got RIPS Cook Off, you got, um, RIPS Day, whatever you call that holiday, Fourth of July. Just think of the attraction that this, that this courthouse would bring. Not only the economic side, people will come and see off dinners, they say, what's that glowing? And they'll come in, then you have your little restaurants downtown, you know, all around. And, you know, take pictures, they're gonna wanna take pictures, they're gonna go back to their county, say, hey, look at Eastland's courthouse. You know, I want, I want this courthouse to be lit up. Yeah, it's gonna take a lot of work, but once I get your blessing, I'll tell you what. My wife's already grapping at me, but I'm gonna be a marketing machine, not only here in Eastland, but I'm gonna have to go everywhere. I've already contacted Senator Burckwell's office, he's a veteran. I'm gonna lay out a plan before him to see if I can get a grant through the Veterans Administration to see if they can help us, help me with this and give him my speech. I've got Congressman Roger Williams that's gonna be here for Memorial Day, and I'm gonna lay the plan out before him. So I think it's a wonderful project. I think it's a project that's never been done before anywhere that I've known of. But Eastland's gonna take precedence over this. And if you let me, and Daniel can, if you have any questions, you can ask Daniel. It's gonna be, it's gonna be beautiful. I mean, it's, I mean, wait till you see the presentations, when we get the boards, we get everything together, you'll, you'll fall in love with it. I mean, it's a wonderful project. Now, this project is gonna be well above sixty thousand dollars. But I promise you, I will raise that money. I've never, never did a project that I did not finish or fail at. The only reason I failed at that lyric is because they failed me, but I, I got it open. I got the part done. I got everything that people have asked me to do, I've done it. So.
So are you talking about lighting the courthouse up, all the architect corners?
Yes, it's gonna illuminate from corners to corner. I'll let Daniel explain more about that. He's, you know, he's working behind the scenes on that.
Well, this is a big project. I mean, I know we've all seen the square light up before. I think y'all have seen me do some stuff around the square. This is something that's gonna be, like he said, all year round. We can work it from our phone, our computer, our laptop, our iPad. It's a really awesome feature. I mean, it's simple, it's easy to use. Uh, the Majestic Theater, we just got done with theirs, and we're actually about to add some more. But all theirs is, is just what we call inception lighting, so it's just the outline perimeter of the building. What we're looking at doing here would be the top of the courthouse, the perimeter of it. And then each level would have what we call wall wash lights, where it shines up and it like puts off the color. Uh, I'm sure you're, I don't know if y'all have seen Carlton State, their water tower turns purple when they play at home. Uh, the UT, University of Texas, uh, I'm sorry. You know, their building is orange. Um, Dallas Mavericks, their, their stadium. So I mean, this is the same product, but it's just so simple to, to make this work. But like he said, this is something that'll be up year-round. Don't have to mess with nothing, it has its own timers. Uh, if you don't want any lights on, just turn it to a warm white or these are cool white and just make your building white. I mean, it's a really, really endless opportunity to do things, so.
So who determines what colors are gonna be up?
They'll, they'll be determined, they'll be determined on the month, what, what it is. Like I said, Fourth of July, we'll light it up red, white and blue. If it's child abuse awareness a month, we'll light it up all blue. Uh, Veterans Day, I believe it's all green. Uh, Police Officer Association, you know, to honor the fallen. I think that's, is that blue? I think it's blue also. We'll light up the courthouse blue. Fridays, when the Mavericks are playing, they're playing a home game, and we have people coming in from out of town, we light it up red and black. I mean, it's, it's just endless what you can do with that.
But the county courthouse represents every city and county.
And I know that.
No, Golden Block comes first.
Yeah, I wouldn't go there.
I know what you're saying. Yeah, I understand that, but that was just something I was throwing out, you know, we could light it up any way we want to. I mean, there's nothing we can't do with this lighting system. Plus, it eliminates all this bickering between all these entities out here, groups, well, who's gonna do this, who's gonna do that? Well, yeah, give it to me, then they don't do it. See, this will be like, almost like a phase one of it, because then you've got the trees to wrap. You know, I like to get the trees wrapped, like this tree over here in this corner, it's a big, beautiful pecan tree. I like to wrap that up in beautiful white and then get crystal angels and put crystal angels on there and call that the angel tree. Because when the wind blows and it hit the, the crystal angels move, they'll, they'll do a prism color. And you can see different colors in the, in the angels. And it's, it'll be beautiful, and that'll be just only for Christmas. But I mean, it's just, uh, it's an endless amount what you can do with this lighting system. I mean, there is no, nobody in this whole county that can do, that has anything like this. And I said, I think it'd be a big tourist attraction too. You know, it'll, we'll take precedence over every, every courthouse. But it was just sad to see that this courthouse wasn't lit, because you have other entities that are fighting with each other, that don't wanna do it. They said, no, you do it, you're supposed to be doing it. No, I'm gonna put an end to that. I wanna take over this project, I don't want nobody coming to y'all saying, hey, I wanna do this. You know, I don't want that. I want this to be our thing. Our courthouse thing, you know? And I promise you, if you, if you give me the go-ahead on this, I will be one marketing machine. I'll be selling hot dogs from one end of this county to another.
I don't.
And another thing is too, I, excuse me, uh, for interrupting them. I already got quite a bit of people on board with this. Some pretty, pretty big entities that are, say, Ruben, we needed this. We've been needed something like this. And, you know, they kind of committed me on this, so. But anyway, that's my spiel. I think it's a wonderful project, and I know there's a lot of questions, so hit me with them.
First of all, who's the money going through?
The money's gonna come through me. I have a person that's gonna give me a 501(c)(3) to use through them. We're gonna open up a checking account through them, or they're gonna use their checking account, it's gonna go into them. Well, we all can keep records of it, how much money we have on that. And then once that money is there, then we'll, in, in increments, we'll pay Daniel through that checking account. So it's always be a record, there'll be forms printed out to where if you say you donate a thousand dollars, we can give you a form for your tax purposes. So there's where that comes in. I already have somebody involved with that, because they wanna help me with it. So it's, that's one way, because I didn't know how I was, I was gonna do a 501(c)(3), how to go buy it, because I was gonna do it on my own and open up a checking account at First Financial Bank. But they already have all that, so.
Okay, and, uh, Daniel, to work on a county building, a contractor has to have workers' comp insurance?
Okay.
Would you have workers' comp covered? Okay, we'd need a certificate in the auditor's office. Okay, great, thank you.
We will have to, and since you're bringing that up, I mean, we're gonna have to do a lot of drilling, a lot of drilling into this courthouse. We're gonna have to secure these lights to make sure they're not just gonna fall.
You're gonna have to get secure, the security, the secure stuff that you're gonna need is gonna be from the historical commission.
And that's something I didn't know.
It's gonna have to approve us.
In Austin. Not local, but one in Austin.
Okay, and that's what we had to do at the courthouse, uh, not courthouse, the Majestic Theater. We had to do a lot of, uh, screwing into the concrete there. And there were some pieces on there that's actually very historic. The, uh, I think it's some tile they have on there, it's some trim. We couldn't screw into that, so what we used was a three M double-sided adhesive tape. And I mean, this stuff was stout. But that's something we'll have to address, we just didn't know exactly where. But the only part that's really gonna be screwed in is more your top level, the very top. The most part on these lower levels is gonna be on the actual roof itself. But yeah, we're gonna have to figure that part out.
Yeah, there's gotta be. I mean, I don't have, of course, I'll leave it up to, you know, commissioners and stuff. I don't have an issue with any of this, and it all sounds good, but like I said, we gotta get the historic commission lined out before we do anything. You gotta get your lined, your 501(c)(3) stuff lined out.
That's already in the works.
And the, and the other thing. I guess I'll stick my neck out, because I typically don't like to speak for the commissioners, but I would say, for me, I wanna know what lights are coming on when.
I, Judge, I.
It'll, it'll have to be approved by this court before, before that, because I don't want some bizarre.
No, no, sir. We were not, we're not gonna do, and I, if I may speak, if I may speak freely, we're not gonna do this, this LGBT crap light up in different rainbow colors. We're not gonna do none of that, because we're a Christian community, and I've been asked that question, and I told him straight to her face, I'm a Christian man, I believe in God. We're not gonna do the LGBTQ lighting of the rainbow colors. If there's rainbow colors, God will present them to us in the sky. That's what I tell him. I said, those, those are the only colors that are gonna be lit up on, on the courthouses by God, with a rainbow. Other than that, you'll have the coal whites, you'll have, you'll have the, the Fourth of July, Christmas, Thanksgiving, all the holidays. And if I have to come before y'all to say, you know, April is child abuse awareness month, may I light the courthouse blue? If I have to do that, that's no big deal. I can just step in real quick for five seconds, get your approval and get out of your way.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what my preference would be, so.
Yes.
Not in particular any, any group at all, but we don't want flashing neon rock and roll signs going down the deal.
No.
I mean, you're already talking about that thing getting lit up, you know, and being seen from outer space. I wanna make sure that the lights that we put out are.
Yes, sir. No, this, no.
Are good enough for the astronauts.
Well, I will tell you too, this app that we get.
I wouldn't think so.
I mean, this app that you get, you know, you just can't go and download it. I mean, Joe just can't certainly use that and try to change these lights. It's a very secured app. I will always have that app on me, just because I need to read and make sure everything's triggering right, if there's any kind of malfunctions. It sends me a text. It won't send y'all any of that, it'll just send me that. Really, whoever needs to be set and stoned here, um, you know, yeah, we can get you logged in or whoever, but it's a real simple process once you're in. But if somebody's driving down the road, they can't find this app and log in. Most part, people won't know it's an app anyways.
Now, the one person they'll have, the tablet or whatever it has, won't be me. It'll be secured through Donnie Gray, because he's a maintenance man. He has a secure side. He, he's, he'll be the one, they'll, they'll set the light tones to it, or Daniel will set the light tones. I won't have nothing to do with it, but just come before you and say, hey, it's Fourth of July, can I light the courthouse red, white and blue? And then Donnie or, or Daniel will, will take control of that, take control of that. So Donnie's already agreed to that, he doesn't have a problem with it. Donnie Gray's gonna be a big part of this, because he knows the whole building with electrical and all that is, so he'll have a big part in it. So we'll know that's gonna be correct and stuff like that. But I think it's a great project. You give me the go-ahead, you'll see a marketing machine like you've never seen before. And if you have any more questions, I'm.
I'm good with it. I think we can come up with a schedule. Yeah. And adopt it, like we do our holidays, on what you're gonna light up, what colors and.
Kinda do a calendar.
Yeah, calendar type situation, that way it's not, you don't have to come in every month or every meeting and ask or something. We have a, we have a list.
Is there a monthly fee to you, if you're monitoring this app and doing all this stuff, is there?
No. No, I mean, like I said, it's always on me. The Majestic Theater is always on, so no. And that's something too, if y'all just wanna meet it. Run it, we can, Rock and Roll will give you a calendar of it, but Donnie, yes, for sure, y'all need to have.
Yeah.
You know, if I move away, which I'm not, but.
All, all the maintenance part of it, Daniel will do. There's any problem with it, Daniel's gonna take care of it. Now, the courthouse, I don't think by any means there's gonna be electrical, if anything electrical happens and knocks it out, yeah, they'll be on us, you know, to see what's going on with electrical. But other than that, Daniel will take care of it. I mean, and matter of fact, Daniel is doing, doing this, a lot of this. I mean, and matter of fact, Daniel is doing, doing this, a lot of this out of the goodness of his heart, 'cause he, he's approving this. He loves this idea that when I brought it to him, that it needs to be done, so, anyway. It's gonna be beautiful, let me tell you, it's gonna be beautiful. Once I get the schematics from him, the poster boards and all that, once you give me the go ahead, I'll, I'll set them up out, out front, as you come into security, if it's okay with y'all. Set up a, a table, a neezel, and put it up there that says, light the Veterans Courthouse. And it'll be, and you'll, you can see what it's before and after, so you'll get to see it. It's gonna be beautiful. It's gonna be an amazing project. I think y'all will be proud of it. It'll make the whole county proud, it'll make the people outside of this county proud of it. So that's my speech.
Yeah.
What are you doing? I'm glad I put the order in.
Any other questions from other commissioners and stuff? Any comments? Okay, entertain a motion then to give him the opportunity to, uh, to start raising money for this project. Motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Maxwell, those say aye. Pose same sign, motion carries.
Um, now, if I need to do a project like sell hot dogs in front of courthouse, so I need to come before y'all and say, can, hey, on this day, can I come, can I start doing my fundraiser with the hot dogs?
Got a lot of hot dogs.
Thank y'all, God bless you for this. Appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, thank you, Daniel. Okay. B, discuss and consider taking action to enter into a contract between Gorman ISD and Eastern County Cooperative Dispatch. If GISD is approved for a police department through TCO and approved by their governing board, Sheriff Flager.
Uh, so basically what it says, they are wanting to, they're trying to get their own police department down there for, uh, for an SRO. Uh, as part of that, they have to have all this stuff, contracts in place, whether they get it or not. It has to be there in place to submit to TCO, that they do have access to that, and everybody's agreed to this deal. Um, so, uh, last I talked, it hadn't gone, you know, the contract and all that stuff has not gone before them. I'm just going through our motions. So it's the same exact contract as everybody else has. Um, I put on there four thousand dollars, 'cause that's what we charge to the Cisco, uh, College. Kind of related, about the same, one officer, basically. Um, if y'all have something different, we can plug that number in there too, whatever, but it's just for them to be able to use our dispatch as part of the court.
Have they seen any of that new legislation that they're, or TCO rules that they're proposing? I just went over with the constable.
Yeah, I, I flipped it to her when she came, talked to me about it, so. They have a lot, they got an uphill battle, and, you know, I've agreed to help and however I can, and, and, uh, I mean, and there's no guarantee that they'll get it. We're just putting all the contracts and paperwork in place, so they can submit to their application.
Yeah, TCO's changing a bunch of their stuff for, I think, in talking to Jay, is that they're, I think, targeting these, these one, two-man ISDs.
And they have specifically said that out of their mouth, that they do not want to, uh, have any more one- and two-man departments. They want the sheriff's office to take them over.
Yeah.
So, um, but as it stands at the moment, they're putting their application in, they gotta have this, this stuff. I, I don't know that they'll get it, but you never know. Uh, they're, the state's talking out both sides of their mouth on this deal, 'cause.
Well, they've got to, 'cause they're forcing the department onto the ISDs.
Yeah, exactly. So, on, on one end, you got them wanting the SROs and all this stuff to have SROs. Um, and on the other hand, TCO's not wanting to do it.
Well, the, the, the legislation, Robert, is crazy, because it, uh, it mandates that they have a car, mandates they have bulletproof vests, mandates all this other stuff, and, uh, I sent in a, a, a public comment to TCO saying this is all the, and, and, Mr. Spiller, I said, all this is, is a, uh, an unfunded, unfunded mandate. With the constables, i- is what was my area of concern, that you're pushing off on us. That we're supposed, I mean, because we're, you know, not going all into that deal, but, you know, Spiller's supposed to be looking at it, you know, so, anyway. That, that's just a side note on the, on this deal.
Things on there that, that I know other departments aren't, aren't doing, that they'll be forced to do too, so.
I, well, yeah.
There's a bunch of them.
And, I mean, the other thing is, is that like a typical TCO deal, say, well, if you don't do this, you're not following these reports that you're in compliance and stuff, then we can make your, we can make your agency inactive. And my question to TCO was, I'd like to know how you're gonna make that constitutional position of constable inactive, because they're not following your stuff.
Yeah.
It's a techy. Okay, motion to.
Now, who will sign the contract?
Uh, Judge Holland will sign it, uh, just like he does the rest of them. And then there's places on here for the, uh, Gorman ISD Board President, uh, to sign as well. But it's the same one that goes out to everybody, that everybody signs, all, all entities.
You're willing him to sign that today?
Uh, yeah, that'd be great, uh, so that we can go ahead and, this is right there, and then I'll forward it down to them for their.
I'll make the motion, allow David to sign out, all kinds of stuff.
I'll second. Do I hear any other motions? All those in favor say aye. Pose same sign.
I had it marked.
I mean, I think you probably need about four of your freaking copies, don't you?
Yeah.
Sign it so they won't get it back to you.
Everybody has signed three times.
Three times.
Why are all these other ones on there for?
That's the, that's the contract, uh, that we do as a whole every year that's sent out, and, and by the time we get done, we have all signatures.
Yeah, they pulled a new thing on us, they're saying that. And the hazard mitig, mitigation deals, they're wanting all of them on one page, so we have to get all the mayors together. Yeah. Me and maybe Ronnie could.
See, Jason and Ryan, they ain't all the time.
Uh, E, county other to file calendar year twenty twenty-three annual reporting compliance, local government code one fourteen oh twenty-five B.
I did email this, and yesterday I emailed the Net Data version out also. Um, and I'll explain again. This is for calendar year twenty twenty-three, and we were using two different softwares in calendar year twenty twenty-three. So the Net Data version I sent out yesterday has the detail through when we converted May twelfth. Um, and then the Tyler version has the detail from that point forward. I just want to let you know too, um, because we couldn't receipt into Tyler right away, there are some duplicate receipts in Net Data and Tyler. Um, because Christina kept receipting into Net Data before we could receive into Tyler. So if you see duplicate receipts, that is why.
So what you emailed yesterday was just Net Data?
Right, Ty, uh, Ginger had included the Tyler in what she sent out.
And she was able to get all of that uploaded to this, correct?
Yes.
On Tyler's side?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And if you want paper, I'll be glad to print seven thousand pages for you.
Not if it costs me a buck.
Oh, it'll be more than a dollar. I'll let you do printing that.
Okay, uh, so we're voting to receive it. Receive, accept. Receive, accept.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Maxwell, second by Mr., was it Robinson? Oh, Wilson, excuse me. All those in favor say aye. Pose same sign, motion carries.
Did he recognize your voice?
Well, I started, I was thinking of you throwing your voice. You were like a minstrel, was dealing with something. Ms. Rogers. Discuss and consider authorizing Eastern County elections to join a consortium led by Grimes County for grant funding from the Department of Defense for the secure ballot delivery for Texas military and overseas voters. The grant would cover one hundred percent cost incurred.
The Department of Defense is doing a, a grant to the, uh, it's called, it's with Democracy Live. It's called Omni Ballot, and it's a ballot delivery portal. It's safer than email. And we had an opportunity to apply for the grant, but the timeframe was just not good. Um, at that time, we only had one military voter that chose email. We're up to two UACVA, which is uniformed overseas voters. Um, this, I chose not to apply for the grant, because you've gotta manage it and everything else. And I figured for only one voter, they probably wouldn't give us a grant. Grimes County is doing a consortium, which means they will handle all the grants, all the paperwork, everything. We just get the benefit of using it for three years, for free. Um, it's seventy-five hundred dollars initially. If we were just gonna pay it out of pocket and do it, and then there is a, a service fee each month. But if, if allowed to join this, we would get to use it for free for three years. If we like it, then we would consider, you know, maybe other options, or going, you know, for a grant ourselves. Um, like I said, they would handle everything. Uh, one of the really good things about this is not only does it help our, our military voters, overseas voters, people who want it by email, but also it is very ADA compliant. So we have a lot of, we're, I'm seeing more and more blind voters in our community that if they have the software in, in their home, they can go on this, and it will speak to them each thing, and then they can use their Sip and Puff or whatever, and then they can vote more independently from home, and then just send it back through the public portal.
And it is very secure?
Yes.
And does the courthouse have the infrastructure to go forward?
That, we don't need it. It, it, they take care of everything. There's nothing to install, nothing to purchase.
No, it's a secure email deal, basically, what you're saying.
Yeah.
And so this would, this would, uh, we're, we're sure that this would apply to the disabled voters as well?
Yes. And it, honestly, it's not a matter of if we're gonna need this, it's a matter of when. 'Cause last legislation, they were already trying to push upon us. And the, um, Democracy Live Omni Ballot is approved in the state of Texas for use.
Bless you. Well, I mean, I like the, like the fact that it didn't cost us anything for three years, and within the three years, we can reevaluate it, see if we're gonna consider it, but also like the, the ability for some of the disabled people. Now, when we say, and I know you specifically mentioned people that are blind, but, I mean, if, if they were disabled at the point where they couldn't travel to the courthouse, or.
They can use their Sip and Puff at home, i- if they have the proper software at home, which most is, you know, if they're to that point, they're, they're set up at home to do things on their own, pay their bills, whatever. So they would have their Sip and Puff, their, their software to be able to utilize this. And even if they can get to the courthouse, our machines have a, a thing where they can plug their Sip and Puff into it. But if somebody's, you know, paralyzed from the neck down, it's kinda hard to get them here and get them in and, and everything, but. But this would ensure that they could do it at home, um, as independently as possible.
Okay, any questions, commissioners?
Does a judge need to sign something?
Hmm, I just need permission and send them an email, and when the grant goes through, then we'll have access to it.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Rex, all those in favor say aye. Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank y'all very much.
One more, six. Much emotion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Frenshaw, all those in favor say aye. Pose same sign, motion carries, we adjourn.
Be watching that kind of.
Thanks, Christina.